Okay, it is now seven o'clock on Thursday, July 9th, 2020, in the Selectman's Hearing Room for the Situate Planning Board. For audio participation, call 425-436-6308, The access code is 538960. I will now accept a motion on the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, God.
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Morstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have a 7:00 PM public hearing. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41 S-81-Q, and with Situate zoning bylaw approved by the Attorney General on June 4th, 2018, and in effect on April 1st, 2019, Section 560 Village Business Overlay District and 940 Referrals, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 9th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room, Situate Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by 14 to 16 Old Country Way LLC, Robert Proctor Manager, for a special permit in the Village Business Overlay District for a mixed-use development regarding the construction of six residential units with two bedrooms each in two buildings, and one of which will have four units, and a second building will have two units, and 3,808 square feet of commercial space for tradesmen with a second-floor office with associated parking, walkways, and site amenities at the project location of 14 to 16 Old Country Way. The property is owned by 14 to 16 Old Country Way LLC, Robert Proctor Manager. The property is shown on assessors' maps as Parcell 4-2-56 and 57. Plans are available for review in the Planning Board Office, Town Hall, Situate, by appointment only. Please call 781-545-8730. Abutters and other interested parties are invited to attend this public hearing. Thank you very much. Okay, before I turn it over to you, we have had some comments that have come in. We have a memorandum from the Water Department is requiring a separate domestic service line to feed the five units. The size of this line needs to be appropriate to feed all units, and is to be determined by the engineer or owner. Please note that our records show that there is an eight-inch cast iron main on Old Country Way. An inspection of the new fire main and service lines will be required. If you have any questions, 545-8735. From Amy Walkie from Conservation, this applicant filed a notice of intent with Conservation. However, the notice of intent has not yet been reviewed or approved by the Conservation Commission. The NOI will evaluate the accuracy of the resource areas as depicted on the existing conditions and proposed site design plans. The resource areas have not been agreed upon at this time. From Becky Malamud, her primary concern is that this property is located with 150 feet of a tributary that runs to our town's surface water supply, which is classified as a Zone A, non-disturbance buffer zone. In this zone, any activities that cause earth movement or disturbance, vegetation removal or cutting, and the construction or placement of any permanent structures are prohibited. The plan for the 14 to 16 Old Country Way includes all three of these activities, which is a concern. I realize that the Zoning Board of Appeals issued a Section 6 special permit that allows for work inside this zone, but the town has a responsibility to protect our drinking water supply and should therefore follow Section 520 of the zoning bylaw. If this plan does move forward, the following items need to be addressed. One, applicant needs to show that the subsurface recharge systems are designed to recharge the first inch of rainfall from rooftop runoff. Two, a number of the proposed businesses for the lower floor of the North Barn are prohibited in the Water Resource Protection District and Zone A, such as commercial printing and painting. Application should be revised to reflect this, Section 520.6. Three, applicant needs to show availability and feasibility of disposal methods for any toxic or hazardous waste produced by tenants. Four, applicant to send specifications for the permeable pavement materials planned for the driveway. Five, the long-term pollution and prevention plan and operations and maintenance plan, both mentioned de-icing agents which cannot be stored on-site for Section 520.6. Please clarify. Six, applicant should specify low-water, drought-tolerant landscape elements in order to decrease the amount of irrigation and pesticides needed on-site. We received this, it's hot off the press, from Elliot, the Deputy Chief, and he has reviewed the property. There is a pretty substantial, quote-unquote, "subsurface recharge system" under the access driveway. We will need to confirm that it will support the weight of fire department apparatus. I didn't see specifically what the curb radius at the driveway entrance is, but it will have to meet fire department access road requirements. Both buildings will require full NFPA 13 sprinkler systems and monitored fire alarm systems. A fire hydrant will have to be installed near the driveway entrance, preferably on the 12-inch main running along Old Country Way. On the plan, I see a dedicated four-inch water line for fire protection into the mixed-use building, but I see no such line into the four-unit residential building. We will require an NFPA 241 plan for fire safety during construction from the contractor. We will require fire department key boxes on both buildings for emergency access. We will need submittal of Tier 1, 2, 3 documents, and would like to review the fire alarm and sprinkler shop drawings with the subcontractors. The fire department will need to be present for the systems acceptance testing. And finally, from William Branton from the Sewer Department, plans for the sewer lines for each building does not illustrate an external clean-out. Each building's lines should have an external clean-out. All new manhole structures shall be furnished with watertight frames and covers. Rubber boots are required for manhole penetrations. I noticed the warehouse was listed as Units 5 through 8. I'd like to know more about the warehouse building, how many pieces of hardware slash appliances will be connected to sewer within the building? If the building is multiple units or a single warehouse storage structure, and the expected use for the space. And finally, lots at 14 to 16 Old Country Way have only been assessed a single betterment. A sewer connection fee of $16,000 per sewer unit shall be owed for all connected buildings at the site beyond the first unit. There's also the water hook-up fees as well. So, that's been read into the record, and I will turn it over to the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, what are the COVID? Can I take the mask off as I speak?
Take the mask off.
Okay, great. I just want to confirm the members that are here tonight. I just, because I know that at least one member is present on telephone.
Yes.
So it's Steve, Ben, Rebecca, Patty, and yourself, Ann, correct? Okay. And I'm just wondering, before I begin, is the town's peer review consultant or engineer present?
Janet, yes.
Yes, he is. He's on the view right now. I cannot use him already.
Great, wonderful. Okay, so my name is Jeff DeLeese, Orenberger DeLeese &amp; Harris. I represent Rob Proctor, who is the manager of the Limited Liability Company, which owns the property. Rob is sitting behind me. And I also am here tonight with Paul Maribito of Ross Engineering. Just a general overview before I give it over to Paul to try and walk the board and the public through what we're proposing. We're not proposing a warehouse, and I'll get into it in a little more detail. This property, 14 to 16 Old Country Way, not to be mistaken, from Country Way, though it's nearby, is in the General Business Zoning District in Green Bush, and it's also in an overlay zoning district, which is the Water Resources Protection Overlay Zoning District. Right now, there are two homes that are presently existing on the property, both of which are pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwellings. The lot is approximately 29,249 square feet, and about 44% of the lot presently is classified as impervious area. There is frontage on two streets. One is Old Country Way, and then there's a very small amount of frontage that's on Jenkins Place. And just for the board's purpose, I'm showing my computer screen onto the wall. It doesn't show up so well, but I took a Google Earth snapshot today to just try and identify the property. And what we see here is the Green Bush zoning district, so the metal-looking...
Is there something, is something going to show something on the screen here? I don't see anything.
It's just on the television.
It's just on the television. He's showing a Google map of the site.
But I can't see it.
Show the TV on.
We don't have the capability, Steve. We're not set up to do that at this meeting.
At this moment.
So, Mr. Pritchard probably has it in his packet.
No, so just, Steve, for your purposes, the only, the only two things that I'm intending to show at this meeting that are not in your packet is just a Google Earth overview of the property and a, just a list of the purposes of the zoning bylaw in this zoning district, which I can refer to such that you can follow along in your zoning bylaw. Those are the only two items that I was going to show on the screen that apparently you're unable to see.
Okay.
Okay, so what we have here...
This is Steve. I just got back. I got dropped, so I did not hear anything about the map that will be shown.
Yeah, so Steve, just briefly, Jeff here. There's only two, there are only two documents that I intend to show on the screen that are not in your packet. One is a Google Earth photo of the property, just to give a general orientation for the public as to where this is. I know that you are familiar with it. And then, secondly, is, I just did a little sheet, like kind of a slide that shows what the purposes of the zoning bylaw are in this zoning district. And you can follow along with that if you have your zoning bylaw in your hand. Those are the only two documents that I was intending to show tonight that are not in your packet.
Okay, Steve? Are you still with us?
There's nothing I can do about it, right?
I know, unfortunately. How long will this last? I don't know.
So, on the Google Earth photo, it just shows, on the bottom right, you can see the self-storage units. I think Chick Fagan owns those. And you can also see Untold Brewing and Mr. Howland's property. And then, I outline roughly in a red highlight the property that is the subject of this application, which shows a driveway coming from Old Country Way and a driveway coming from Jenkins Place, along with a turnaround parking area and some very, I think, three buildings that are on the property, two of which are single-family dwellings. So, essentially, I had indicated frontage on Old Country Way and Jenkins Place. The jurisdiction of the town boards that we're dealing with today, or with respect to this application, are yourself, Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals has already reviewed this for purposes of the Water Resources Protection District, an issue to finding, which I can explain. And the Conservation Commission has a currently pending notice of intent. There is a tributary that runs through a pipe underneath the property and discharges on the opposite side of the street, and then enters another pipe that goes into the pond. I'm not sure the name of the pond. I think it's...
Old Oak and Bucket Pond.
Bucket Pond. So, I'm just going to put on the screen right now, Steve, so you can follow along, is the 2017 plan that we previously had before the zoning board, and I wanted to explain that for purposes of the public. And actually, Steve, I'm not, I don't think that you have the 2017 plan. I apologize.
I don't think...
Yeah, no, you, yeah, you only have, you only have the present application, so this is the third document. Steve, what this...
Steve, this is on TV if you want to turn on Channel 9.
I don't have a TV up here, so...
All right.
What this plan shows is a concept for the property that was previously presented to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It was presented in the year 2018. The ZBA issued a finding that would have been consistent with an approval, would have had to have gone to your board after that. It shows two buildings on the property that would contain the same uses which we're proposing here, which are uses that are permitted as of right in the zoning district, Section 420.3S in particular, as in SAM. The two buildings that are shown on the plan are about a total of 7,500 square feet, and also, there's 22 parking spaces that are shown on this plan around the perimeter of the lot. This was a plan that was presented to the zoning board. As I indicated, it is not the plan that we're putting before the Planning Board tonight. When we were at the ZBA in 2018, various neighbors came to the meeting and expressed their displeasure. They were not enthusiastic about this plan at all. And so, consequently, what resulted was we decided not to apply before the Planning Board, and instead, we engaged, we engaged the neighbors, and we also had a meeting or two with Karen to come up with some kind of alternative design that we thought would be a better utilization of the property, both from the perspective of the neighbors and the town. And so, that is what we're going to be proposing today. Now, I'm going to put that plan up, which Paul is going to explain in more detail for purposes of Steve at home. I'm now showing the plan that was presented with the zoning application, I mean, with the Planning Board application. I just want to step back. Paul, you presented a plan initially with the application, and then you presented a revised plan or was it just a sheet revision? Could you explain that to me?
Yes, we submitted a revised sheet, Number 3, where we edited the notes to be consistent with the intended use of the property, to make it clear. We also, it eliminated two parking spaces that were in front of the bay on the left side of the rear building. That was the only change on those plans.
So, for purposes...
So, am I looking at the June 22nd set of plans, Jim?
That would be the correct plan, Steve.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That's correct.
So, I'm showing the June 22nd plan on the board, and Paul will review it in detail, but just the general overview here is that we're showing two proposed buildings, which contain only three shops as opposed to the previously proposed eight, with a total square footage between those three shops of 3,808 square feet, 300 of which square feet of that 3,808 is located on a second floor. Then, in addition to those three commercial spaces, we're proposing six two-bedroom dwelling apartments that are approximately 800 to 820 square feet in size. And the concept is that they are to be rental apartments, not for sale. We also, this plan, the difference also on the site prominently between this and the prior plan that was before the ZBA is that we don't show many parking spaces outside. All but four parking spaces are in the interior of the building. The rest is, we had too many, we had too many parking spaces previously, so we've been able to revise this to eliminate some required spaces, and then also to design it such that all but four spaces are on the inside... Excuse me, all but eight spaces are on the inside of the buildings. We also have spoken with the neighbors and proposed landscaping plan, which I think is the last sheet of your architectural design, or your architectural plans. And that landscape plan provides hedgerows and screening, et cetera, as well as a privacy fence on the side yard of the property that would be the easterly side yard, closest to the home along southeasterly side, closest to the home, closest to...
Is that on the, on this drawing set? I don't see it.
The fence is, I believe, on Paul's plan.
Landscaping plan.
The fence is...
It's on the...
Landscaping plan sheet?
No, it's on the Proctor 14/16 Old Country Way with the rendition of what they're doing on the front page, and the landscaping is on the last page.
Okay, so we jumped it on that?
Excuse me?
I just turned to Paul.
All right.
So, I didn't, I'm not showing the architect, the landscape plan on the board right now, Steve. I'm just explaining that there are some landscape features.
Okay. There is no plan on this one?
There is on, did you receive... The colored pictures, Steve?
Yeah, I have those.
It's on that, on the last page of that. The colored pictures, okay?
Architectural's.
Is that what we're looking at now?
Yes.
Yeah, the architect, we're not looking at that now. I was explaining that, but I don't have it on the screen for Steve to follow along.
But he has, he has this.
He has it.
Yes.
If he wants to reference it, it's the last sheet of the architectural renderings.
Right. Which is this?
Parking on the site, I briefly touched upon it. The zoning bylaw requires parking spaces allocated to certain uses. Under the zoning bylaw, generally, it's one parking space per each bedroom. There are 12 bedrooms. Additionally, there is a section of the zoning bylaw that allows the Planning Board to reduce that to one and a half parking spaces per each dwelling unit, which my calculation is either 12 for 12 bedrooms, or nine if the board desired to change the requirement. Additionally, our calculation is such that, what the plan would be for these three commercial shops is that local tradesmen can drive their trucks into the building and close the garage door. And there are actually about, there are, there's enough room for seven spaces on the inside between the three shops. And so, there is no zoning bylaw provision that allocates any parking to this particular use. So, there is a catch-all provision in the bylaw that says that, for purposes of calculating the required parking spaces, the catch-all says that the board can make the determination as to what is adequate to accommodate normal demand. And that's located in Section 760 of the bylaw. So, we're providing 19 spaces. We calculate that we're, in the worst case, required to have 15, and in a alternative, to have 12. Now, just briefly, before I give it off to Paul, there is, it was read into the record that we are seeking relief under the Village Business Overlay District. That is correct, and it referenced a zoning bylaw that was in effect in 2019. The reason for that is that the zoning, the zoning on this property has been frozen, and the applicant has chosen to come in under the Village Business Overlay District under the 2019 bylaw that was in effect prior to the zoning changes. And the reason for that is because we were fairly well down the road on the design of this, working with the neighbors after having been before the ZBA in 2018. So, we froze the zoning, and that's what we're coming in under. Notably, there's no standard that I saw in the zoning bylaw that indicates what would guide the Planning Board as to any findings that the Planning Board would have to make in the Village Business Overlay. I just simply did not see a standard, except that the bylaw contains some provisions that require us to meet design review and site plan standards. And also, there is a requirement that 20% of the site is maintained as open space. Our calculation is that we're proposing more than 50% open space on the property. Additionally, there is a requirement or of a density calculation in the bylaw that indicates that you can have up to 16 units per every 40,000 square feet. When you do the calculation based on our square footage, our calculation tells us that that would be around 11 units. And as I indicated previously, we're proposing six. And before I hand it off to Paul, I just wanted to explain what the purposes of the bylaw indicate this district to be. And that would be set forth, Steve, if you wanted to follow along, in Section 560.1. And that would be to promote opportunities for local and small-scale businesses, to encourage alternative modes of transportation such as public transit, bicycling, and walking, encourage alternative modes of transportation such as public transit, bicycling, and walking, to provide for a higher-density mixed use in multifamily housing in the village areas, to provide for a variety in residential housing development patterns, and which reflect the unique characteristics of each sub-area. I'm not sure what that means. Also, to increase the production of housing affordable to low and moderate-income households, and then finally, to encourage efficient provision of necessary utilities and community services. I know that the board is interested in affordable housing. I wanted to explain that the bylaw has a mechanism that allows for bonus density if you were to provide affordable housing. We're constrained on this site by the amount of impervious area that we could take up, and we're pretty much maxed out on that. We're not seeking any bonus density, and as far as affordable housing, though, we're not proposing, in this situation, the zoning bylaw exempts affordable housing requirements for any proposal that proposes, I think, less than eight units. We're proposing six, so we're exempt from the requirement of providing affordable housing. But the way we look at this is because it's rental property, because we're looking at 800-square-foot units essentially, it provides a nice alternative for rentals to local folks who otherwise might not be able to afford to either rent a house or to buy a house in the town of Situate. So, with all of that said, and knowing that there's been some peer review back and forth, and Paul, the board might want to hear from Paul as to what he sees on the site. I'm gonna send it off to Paul unless, Anne, you want me to answer any specific questions, threshold issues, or anything to that effect.
My first question would be, why are you keeping that 10-foot cement strip?
Because we own it? We're, what would we do?
Did you hear the question answered?
Why are they keeping that strip that's 10 feet wide that goes onto Jenkins Place? In other words, I'm not disputing that it's yours. Of course it's yours. Are you not going to rip up the cement?
Good question. I see no reason to not rip it up, but maybe there's some kind of safety or access reason. If Paul, I'll let Paul answer that question for you.
If there was one way to reduce some of the impervious area on the site, that's actually poured concrete surface. It's been there quite a while. In the event of an emergency, the fire department could also use that for an emergency access.
It's 10 feet wide, Paul.
Pardon?
It's 10 feet, it's 10 feet wide.
Which is more than wide enough for an emergency vehicle? We've talked to the fire department about that.
So-
The fire department did not indicate that in their comment we just received today.
Okay.
Not there.
That they needed that for emergency access.
That was in previous conversations I had with them.
There's no good reason to keep the concrete, and I guess I was just informed that our landscape plan indicates that it's going to be turned to grass.
Fine.
I was unaware of that.
All right. That was the overriding issue as far as impervious is concerned.
Yeah.
That cement needs to go away.
Yep.
It's very simple.
It is, yes, it is, and we show that.
All right, Paul, continue.
Okay, so, I have the plan on the screen. Paul, if you need me to zoom in on anything, or whatever, go to any particular sheet, just let me know.
Anne, do you have any slack up there?
No.
Why?
This wire is going right to you. I don't want to pull it out. That's okay. That's okay. That's fine. I picked them up.
Would this one give them more?
No, this is fine.
All right, thanks.
The plan Jeff has up there shows the proposed site, where the proposed buildings, on the left are the four residential units, and in the back would be the larger building that has the shops on the lower level and two apartments on the upper level. We show a total of eight parking spaces outside. There's a total of four in front of the proposed residential units, and there's also an additional four on the right side of the rear building.
So, just to stop you there, Paul, the outside parking spaces are parking spaces two, four, six, and eight.
Four, six, and eight.
They're within the driveway behind the garage of each unit.
Those are in front of the garages of each unit.
So, basically, they're in tandem?
Yeah, so there's a parking space within the garage, and then a parking space behind the garage outside. And then there would be four spaces, shown as nine, 10, 11, and 12 outside as well.
Why don't you go to the next sheet, Jeff?
Sure.
This plan shows the proposed buildings, as well as the driveway coming in on the right side of the property.
Steve, that's sheet number four. Keep going, Paul.
What this drawing shows is primarily is, it shows a stormwater drainage system, the management system. To the rear, the four housing units on the left side of the property, there are infiltrators that will pick up the roof runoff from the rear portion of the roofs. That's all clean runoff, which will be directly, which will be directed into the recharge units to be recharged back into the ground. Within the driveway coming into the site, which is on the right side of the proposed units, there are heavy-duty drainage and infiltrator units that will collect the water coming off the front half of the roofs of the residential units on the left, as well as the runoff from the front portion of the rear building. On the far-right side of the properties you come in, there's that long, narrow strip. It's down further, right there. What that is, is a separate bio-retention system. What that will collect is the water from the pavement. The water will flow into that area, and it'll be treated, and then it'll be redirected back into the recharge units in the driveway, and where the water will be recharged back into the ground. To the rear of the large building, or the larger building at the back, there are infiltrators that will collect the water from the roof at the rear half of the building. That's the extent of the stormwater management system. The, all of the buildings-
Sorry, Paul, could you point out where that, I missed you where you said you're collecting fire water. Where is that system?
Which water?
You said you were collecting water for the fire system off the pavement?
Yeah, that's what you said.
No, the runoff from the paved, from the paved area is going to be directed to a bio-retention system, which is on the far, which is on the far-right side of the properties you drive in. The water from the pavement, you know, the driveway area, will flow into that area. It'll be treated, and then flow back into those recharge chambers in the driveway, and directed down into the ground for recharge. So, there's basically three recharge systems, one one behind each residential, I mean, one behind the residential units, one behind the larger building, and the one to the larger one that's in the driveway itself. One of the comments from the fire department we received tonight was their concern whether or not that recharge system in the driveway would handle the weight of the fire truck and the wheel. Those are all heavy-duty chambers that can withstand the loading of heavy vehicles. The buildings are also going to be tied into the existing sanitary sewer in Old Country Way, as well as the existing water main. There's actually a new water main in the street. It's a 12-inch cement-lined ductile iron. It is not an 8-inch cast iron. And those, we have responded to the comments from the sewer department, the Water Resource Commission. We just got the comments from the fire department. They seem straightforward. Some of those tie in with what the water department was looking for as well. These revised plans do incorporate some of the comments that were made from these various review agencies. With that, I think we can go to the next drawing, Jeff.
Can I ask a question before you leave that?
Go ahead.
There's a 24-inch buried-
Pipe?
RCP, it looks like.
Yes. That's a-
Who owns that?
That's on the owner's property. That was installed by a previous owner or previous owners over time. It's collecting water from a seasonal stream that goes all the way up to the old landfill that Situate had on Stockbridge Road years ago, and that directs water into your reservoir. That's the only resource area. It's, it's a, it's an old seasonal stream that's been there for years. Again, it runs from the old-
It's piped.
Yes, it's been piped. It's a 24-inch pipe. We did have that cambered to get the actual location of it. Based on that, that's how we surveyed it to get the correct location. That's going to stay in place the way it is.
It is, I guess, my question was, who owned it? Who's responsible for maintaining it?
It's on private property. As far as we know, it was not installed by the town. It was installed by a private homeowner years ago.
That's not what he's, Paul, what he's asking is, that pipe's going to stay there. In the future, who is responsible to maintain it going forward, if this development goes forward? Is it up to Mr. Proctor to maintain this pipe?
If the town, if the, I think the town has an interest in maintaining the pipe, and the applicant is more than happy to grant the town an easement to do that, and as well, put in its association document that it will also, you know, the owners will also have the obligation to maintain it, but I think that this particular pipe has a specific municipal benefit, and I think that the town should have full rights to be able to enter the property and maintain it as it desires and is necessary in the event that it's not maintained properly by the association, which will have a document that puts that affirmative responsibility as well on the owner.
Did that answer your question, Steve?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. We should make sure we get clarity on it as we go through this. The other question I have relating to it follows where you have the subsurface recharge system number one, which is through the, through the top of the page behind the, it's right next to the RCP pipe. Do you really do that construction there with the pipe there?
Yes. We've located the pipe. That's a 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe. Those are infiltrators. Again, they'll be receiving the water from the roof.
Are they at the same elevation as one above the other, or what? It looks like it's almost, it looks like the foundation or whatever you got is the dotted line around there.
No, they-
Right in the pipe.
No, we know the exact location of the pipe. Those infiltrators can be placed where we show them without having any impact on the pipe. That pipe is a closed system. We show the elevations on the plan as well, where they are vertically, I mean, where those chambers are vertically. That pipe is only in the ground about two feet. It's fairly shallow. There wasn't a lot of cover on it, and it's fairly flat. I think it only drops of one or two inches over the whole length of it.
Steve, if you walk out to the-
I'm more worried about the construction of whatever you're building and whether you damaged the pipe or not, right?
No, those are chambers, yeah. No, those are-
I don't want to have that happen.
No, we, you know, we'll be inspecting that, and we'll make sure that the pipe is not compromised.
We're also going to have to stake out the location of the pipe at the time of the construction.
We will, yeah.
And because it's a pipe, like diverting a stream, it probably makes sense to get a little aggressive at making sure that it's notable to, during the time of construction. So, we're going to need to think about that to make sure that it's properly marked. I don't know if that's with, you know, rope and stakes.
Normally, what we do is lay out the side of the pipe closest to the construction area. We could even put like a snow fence up there so no one goes into that area, where they're doing the foundation work and the drainage work. Other than that, you know, the pipe would be safe.
It's a pretty thick pipe, too. I mean, it's-
It is thick.
If you, if you walk out to the-
It's a classified pipe. It's about, it's almost three inches thick.
If you walk out to the, on Old Country Way, or actually, from the vantage point of Country Way, and look over the land that is owned by the law office, you'll see the outlet of that culvert on the property. The water actually goes underneath, the pipe actually goes underneath Old Country Way and lets out on the opposite side, on private property, into a culvert where it continues to run, the water, but not the pipe, and then it enters another, another pipe and goes underneath Country Way, but you can get a sense when you look at it as to the durability of the pipe and the size of it and so forth.
Then, let me ask you this. Why can't you move this chamber a number of feet to the left so that it is not anywhere near the corner, the corner of it is not anywhere near the pipe?
Well, we were trying to, if that's what the board would like, we could do that. I don't know about the engineering of it, and I guess that the Water Resources Protection District has certain activities that are prohibited. I'm not sure. I would need to, I would need to look into that issue, Anne.
All right, we need to really put a star on this one.
Steve, the picture that I sent you was the end of the pipe, as it's on the other, like what Jeff just described.
Karen, I'm really just more concerned about construction activities and what might do to that pipe, particularly if we're relying on it to drain to, you know, to drain a fairly large, you know, sort of drainage area back to the pond, right?
Right.
We can-
It's just about making sure there's enough sort of engineering review to maybe not get into the problem, but also to avoid creating problems during construction as well.
All right, we're going to flag that, Steve, for future reference. Thank you. Are you all set for now, for the moment?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm flipping off to sheet number five, because that's what Paul asked me to do.
Sheet number five shows the location of the proposed utilities that would service the building. In the front of the building and the rear of it, these are the four residential units. You can see the roof leaders going into the different recharge areas, as well as roof leaders for the rear building going into their respective recharge areas. It also shows the outline of the proposed pavement. It shows that 24-inch pipe that's on the site, and it shows the connection of the rear of the four units being tied into the sanitary sewer going into Old Country Way. That's one sewer connection, and then the rear building has a separate sewer connection going into Old Country Way as well. That sewer in Country Way is about 15 to 17 feet below ground, but there's also, there's two existing stubs that we're going to tie into that are about six feet below ground. That's why we have the two separate connections. And the water main is going to come in from the street. We show a proposed hydrant between the front building and the rear building. I saw the fire department this evening is requesting another hydrant at the entrance to the driveway, so we'll talk to them about that as well. That's all this sheet shows, and I think the next sheet is various details. There's three sheets for the different details, which show how things would be- There's three sheets for the different details, which show how things would be built in cross-section. Those are mainly for the contractor when he's installing these different components. It shows the materials that they're supposed to use to construct the different sections of the infrastructure, the piping, the recharge units, the chambers, you know, the different types of sand and stone that's required, pipe sizes, the pipe types, et cetera. Just three sheets of those.
Can I ask a question about the utility? It looks like you've got five PFPs on that second building.
Yes.
Are there two residential and two shops?
Yes, there's three shops below and there's two apartments up...
Three shops below, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't realize there were three.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there's three.
What are the uses of the three shops?
So, the zoning bylaw, the actual language of the bylaw is a quote "shop of a carpenter, cabinet maker, electrician, job printer, painter, paper hanger, plumber, sign painter, or upholsterer." So, what I understand the actual concept to be was, I think, set forth in a letter I sent to the board, which is essentially a shop of a carpenter or an electrician. Those... Or a plumber, I believe. And of course, maybe an upholsterer and if...
I'm not moving.
But it's going to need to be... If you think about... I think you guys approved a project that I was involved in a few years ago for Mr. O'Keefe. Is that... What street is that? Ford Place?
It's Ford Place, yeah.
So, it's a similar concept as that, Steve? And I think I just... You know, I realized that I had forgotten to put a board up that kind of shows what we're proposing it to look like. So, Steve at home, I just put up on the screen the first page of the architectural drawings, like literally the cover sheet that has a concept photo of what these would look like.
Yep.
All right. So, wait, can I go back to that for a minute? So, in addition, Steve, there's prohibited uses in the Water Resource Protection District, and they cannot have any of those uses in those buildings. And those are specifically painting, wood preserving, furniture stripping, and photographic processing, printing, and some other ones that are in the Water Resource District. They cannot be in those buildings. And on the other Ford Place one, we had some type of signage that, you know, you couldn't have certain things in there.
Yeah, I think we had signage...
Yeah, I think we'll need something like that.
Agreed. I don't think in that context, I don't think we had an association document. I need to give a little thought to that as to what the appropriate vehicle would be because these are apartments as opposed to different form... You know, in other words, the form of ownership would all be one person. And so, I'm not... Homeowners Association is not the appropriate vehicle, but there are ways to restrict this. And certainly, we can put signs up and notes on plans. And I'm sure you would, if you were to approve this, have conditions of approval. We need to put a little thought into that.
All right. Before...
Would the... Would it be precluded that these couldn't be ultimately converted to condos and sold independently?
Haven't thought of that. I'm not sure that... I'm not sure what the... I don't know. I'm sure you can do anything, Steve, as far as putting a restriction in. And the concept is not to sell them, but I'm not sure that... I'd have to talk to my client about actually deed restricting this such that they can't be sold because who knows what the future holds.
Okay.
You know, I would just want to also then say you wouldn't rule out having... requiring some kind of homeowners association that were to not remain in a single ownership.
Good point.
All right. I'd like to turn it over to Janet for her comments from Horsley Witten.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me well, or should I speak louder?
You're fine.
You're fine.
You're good.
That's right. So, for the record, my name is Janet Bernardo. I'm a professional engineer with the Horsley Witten Group. And we were asked to do a review of your zoning bylaw associated with this project as well as a stormwater management. We provided a letter to the board dated June 15, 2020. It was relatively long. Do you have it in preview?
Yes. Thank you. Yep.
And I'd like to kind of hit on some of the various topics that way you can... There's a few tunes or whatever. The applicant submitted revisions according to this peer review this week, so I've started to kind of go through some of those. And I wanted to kind of hit on the topics that are still unquestioned or are eager to think about a little bit more. So, if you start... We kind of... A lot of it is going through your regulations, section by section, so a lot of it is just repeating of your actual regulations. But on page four of 26, there's the facade treatment, number E. And there is the comment was the use of awnings or canopies over windows and possibly glazing of the windows. So, the applicant does not think that this particular project should have awnings. So, I just wanted to pull that out as something that the planning board may want to decide if this is an important topic, important item for you to keep in mind in future, you know, should the windows be glazed or not? Then if you go to page...
Hey, Anne.
Yes, yes, what?
If I could just interrupt there. I think that this kind of issue along with any other kind of sort of architectural discussions, I think we should...
Push it off to design review.
Extend this over to the design review committee.
Right. Yes, you're right.
And get there and clip.
Okay, Janet.
Okay, so page six of 26, there were some setbacks. Letter D required various setbacks from a zoning... A residential zoning district for residential use. The plans that they're talking about today show a setback on one side of 16.9 feet. The plans that I reviewed this week, they've made that 20 feet, so I don't think it's going to be an issue. But I'm just telling you that was something that can come up as a... It's a use even if it's not the residential district. There's many comments about requiring a landscape plan and a more detailed landscape plan. So, the applicant is basically just saying that they will provide a landscape plan. So, there's a number of comments that landscaping is... Comes up. And there's also, if you look at page seven of 26, there is under three E. Everybody's there. Talking about the percent of impervious area and referencing permeable pavement. The applicant has said that there was a number of references to permeable pavement, but it's my understanding that they will not be using permeable pavement. So, the board should understand that as well. So, that was presented a number of places, and they are now saying that they're not using permeable pavement, so.
And they're also going to be taking out that stretch that's 10 feet wide of concrete that's going away.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard that. That's great. Because I commented about that along the way also. So, there's some various landscaping comments that we don't really have to go through. Basically, landscape architecture will eventually come up with that. Page nine of 26, under E, and the open space, they... He just basically asked them to know the percentage of open space. As I heard him say earlier, it is more than 50%. The requirement is 20%. So, they are meeting that open space requirement. On page 10, you have the intake 19 parking spaces, but there's one of the parking spaces in a large building that seems to be on the backside of the building, and that shows up in the architectural plans. The architectural plans have a footprint of kind of where the buildings that are parking spaces will be in the doors. One of them is on the back, and it doesn't seem to be realistic. So, and we haven't received any revised architectural plans, so that's just exactly how that parking is going to work inside of that building with those seven parking spaces is something to remind us of how that's going to look.
Janet, if I can just interrupt for a second is, would you just explain where the parking space is behind the building that you saw? I'm not... Perhaps you have an...
On the architectural plan... Let me pull up the architectural plan. There was one that showed the footprint of the cars in that building.
Was it the colored drawings in top of that, Janet?
The architectural plans are separate, not the site plans, but the architectural plans. The door was in the back. It was... It was... I'm looking at page 10 of 11 of the architectural plans. It shows the garage door in the back of the building.
Yeah, I see that, too. Both in the front and the back, like a drive-through, right?
Yeah. So, and there was kind of... I thought there was a floor plan, so...
It's in the center one, right?
Yep, yes.
Yes.
It shows garage doors on both sides.
But then if you go to the next page, you don't...
I believe that's an error, and we'll take a look at that to rectify that error. The site... You know, to the extent that there's a differentiation between the site plan and the architectural plan, the site plan is what controls our site, and we'll have to correct our architect on that.
Hold on, I've got her on the line right now.
Yeah, do you want to...
No. We'll deal with that.
We'll deal with it. Don't worry about it. All right. Duly noted. All right, Janet.
We can unmute her.
I'm up to... I'm... I'm sorry, you guys okay?
Yep, we're fine.
Yeah, buddy.
Okay. I'm up to page 12. And just so you know, there was a number of items that we asked them to include, which includes things like just number of anticipated people on the site. And they are including all these various topics that were required in the zoning regulations. They're adding to one of their sheets with some notes, as well as when you guys were talking about the not having the different uses... That's in the Water Resources, which starts on page 16. They had some specific uses like the carpenter shop and not having hazardous materials and not using various types of materials that they are adding a note to one of their sheets, eliminating all uses that are not allowed within the Water Resources system. I'm up to page 18, which is part of the Water Resources District, which of course is an important part of this development. And one of the requirements is for the infiltration systems, the subsurface drainage systems, to have a three-foot down separation to the bottom of the natural groundwater elevation. And the system one originally showed less than two feet, and system two shows less than three feet, or system four... System three has the four feet. But we revised plans. We revised system one, so now it has ample, but they have not revised system two, so that's still going to be an outstanding issue for them. But they need to raise that system up as well to have the required three feet of separation. Page 21 is where they talk about the de-icing and sand material and what that all means. So, they are just adding a note saying that they're not having hazardous materials on the property. And now getting to the stormwater report that starts on page 23. We're almost at the end. We're only going through two pages. I tried to make it easier. The... So, I think we kind of talked about before, the storm master, stormwater handbook requires has 10 standards that the applicant should meet. And most of them, they're able to kind of come and place the most important topic. And so, there's two different issues that I want you to be aware of. One is for system three, which is the large system underneath the parking lot. They are showing an exfiltration rate of 8.27, where originally the other system showed 2.41, which is slower. And the applicant is... What they suggested is that they want to remove the soil that's beneath the existing soil, the native soil, that's kind of the lonely sand and it's a slower infiltration rate, and replace that with good quality, clean sand that would have a higher infiltration rate, which is allowed in many places, is something that gets permitted by various boards and commission members of new specifications. But I don't know if you want this in Zone A because that would just increase the speed that the stormwater would get to the system, to the ground, in the groundwater. This qualifies, if you look under standard six, basically, standard restrictions are primary items to be focused on. The site is in Zone A, and according to the Mass Stormwater Handbook, you are not allowed, you're prohibited from infiltrating in a Zone A. However, because this is a redevelopment project and they are reducing the impervious area, they may be allowed to infiltrate in Zone A. I have reached out to Mass DDP to kind of get a clarification on this topic. Basically, the concern is having any contaminated material, any spill. Like if somebody came on the site and there was a spill of whatever, gas tank leaked, oil leaked out of a car or whatever, you don't want it to get into the groundwater, which will get into the drinking water supply. It's definitely something to focus on and be concerned with. So... So, but Mass DEP typically, they do not allow any infiltration. However, they may, the applicant may be able to get some clarification from Mass DEP. I have not heard back yet, but I think that it would be helpful to make sure that what they're proposing is allowed. I think one of the main things that I have heard when I've spoken to Mass DEP on other similar topics, for instance, the permeable pavement is definitely prohibited in the zone A because there's no way to capture a spill. And so the containing, the spill, if a spill were to occur, you want to be able to contain it and not allow it to infiltrate at all. So how they're going to do that is kind of a critical topic. And they are proposing, even the roof runoff, going to separate infiltration system is, I think, I believe is okay because it's clean water, it's, it's certainly clean, infiltrate the roof runoff, break, but it's the parking lot runoff. What they're proposing is kind of going to the sand filter bio retention area, which it would probably be helpful after I finish this, for the applicant to explain that a little bit more because it's kind of a confusing notion. It's not your standard design. But they're sending it into a sand filter bio, which does provide a lot of treatment. However, it still infiltrates into the ground eventually. So then it goes from the bio retention area through pipes to the subsurface infiltration system number three, the large one. So I'm really thinking that there must be, there would be a better way to contain a spill in some way and maybe that containing is by lining that sand filter, lining the bio retention area. And so then any pipe, any, if it still happened, it would then be able to be stopped. Maybe the outlet pipes would have caps on them and so that they would immediately have a cap and still happens, they get capped, there's no, the lining is containing it all, the entire sand filter is carried away, cleaned off, they come out, three people come out and clean it all up and then they start again and it doesn't get into the groundwater supply. I think that's the biggest concern is how to keep it out of any potential spill happening from getting out of groundwater. So that's really the outstanding item as far as the stormwater goes. We had a few little minor technical pieces that they are able to manage as well as the operation and maintenance and the erosion neutral amount of comments that they were able to address relatively straightforward. I think the operation and maintenance plan is critical, that that is solid and clean and that somebody is going to report on it annually, that that can be something that this town knows is happening on a regular basis. So maybe, maybe if the conservation issue, maybe if the planning board that a report in, the report gets submitted to. Working in a water supply, you know, it's a public drinking water supply is a concern. So taking a serious interrogation for how that stormwater is being contained is the primary issue.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Jeff?
Thank you. I just wanted to note to the board, you know, the obvious insofar as normal tributaries are not piped through properties. So the good news here is that the protection of the water supply is actually the pipe So I understand that the pipe empties on the opposite side of the road, but it's, I think that the good news here is that, is that, you know, any spill, so long as it's actually contained on the site, even if in a worst case scenario, we can't engineer something that it, you know, to stop it from infiltrating, it's not going to infiltrate into the tributary, it would seem, because the tributary is a pipe.
All right, Karen?
All right, so Janet touched on most of the issues. One of the things that Janet identified in her report too was that the board decide about, they show a bike rack, I think, or maybe they don't show a bike rack, I don't remember, but there's, they don't really, the applicant doesn't show any pedestrian or bicycle facilities. And as you will recall, under the Drew project, you're probably getting a sidewalk on Old Country Way. So I don't know how the board feels, what they want the applicant to do with pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
And we show a bicycle rack on sheet three of 10 on the right side of the larger building.
Karen, could you clarify, I was unaware of the sidewalk being installed. Is that, which side of the street is that being installed on?
Right now, it's just a contributions potentially being made for a sidewalk.
And could you, are you aware, are you able to even answer the question? There was a CPC project that started a sidewalk from Ronnie Schoen's halfway to Green Bush and stopped?
It's not funded yet.
It's been put into the capital plan.
So to the extent that that gets built, it's right, right around the corner there.
Right.
We're well aware of that.
Yeah.
And will there be a connection from that down Old Country Way?
Yes.
Into the, into that same area?
Yes, that was the hope.
Where the brewery is and all that.
Right, exactly. So to ultimately complete the whole sequence of sidewalk all the way, you know, pretty far into Situate.
That's great.
Where would the sidewalk on Old Country Way be?
I guess it may probably be on this side of the street with the, with the big covert or the 24-inch pipe being on the other side, but it hasn't been discussed at this point in time. I mean, they should probably, you know, just make sure accommodations are made for pedestrian activity. The other comment I wanted to make is about the erosion control plan. I really think that having two construction entrances really is not, is not necessary for a site this size. And I think the one directly opposite the street from the 24-inch covert should probably be eliminated.
I'm sorry, Karen, can you say eliminate what? I'm sorry, I was-
The second construction driveway.
Thank you.
Construction entrance.
Entrance.
Yeah.
All right, are you all set, Karen?
Yeah.
All right, I'll open it up.
Sorry, I just wanted, one of the questions that was previously raised was the ability for the pipe to maintain, you know, the load of a truck going over it. I just wanted to note to the board that a public street, you know, also goes over this pipe and it seems to hold up just fine.
Thank you. All right, I'll open it up to the board. We'll start with you, Steve.
Just to respond to that last comment, I think the question was about the load of the, in the driveway of the-
Chambers.
Of the infiltration or whatever, you know, the stormwater system was about the load on the, on the 24-inch pipe.
Okay.
All right.
So the permeable pavement is gone. Can you guys, I'm really having a hard time sort of figuring out where the pavement starts and stops here. So can you just identify where the pavement, is the pavement in on anything or?
You should go to sheet three, Joe.
Okay, so I'm going to flip to sheet three on the site plan, Steve. See if I can zoom in a little for the public. Are you sure it's this sheet? I thought it was a different sheet, I thought it was sheet four.
You can see the pavement.
Where?
Where? Sort of.
So is it the 20-foot plus the 22-foot?
The, Steve, the-
Are those curbs for the parking space or are those your own pace?
Yeah, the 22 feet is for the driveway going into the garages on the residential units and the main drive coming in from Old Country Way is 20 feet.
Yeah.
And that, that brings the vehicles into the building on the left and then the pavement goes back to the front of the building in the rear. The pavement includes spaces nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Oh, to the rear building.
You know, Steve, I'm confused as well. And so I think that what we should do is we'll send in a, we'll send in a plan sheet that shows the edge of the pavement, you know, kind of jump out so you can actually really see it, okay?
You can't see it on this.
Yeah.
You can't. It's too confusing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, I would, I think Karen's comment about this, you know, pedestrian access, bicycle access, et cetera, we need to sort of make sure we're looking at that. What's the total water usage?
Total water usage, in other words, will they be pulling gallons from the town? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that we are aware of that.
Could you guys figure that out for the next step and give us an update? And do the shops end up needing more water for any reason than any of the residential units?
No, I'd say no because typically residential use is your highest use. They usually base that on, if it was a septic system, it'd be based on 110 gallons of water per bedroom. We have a total of, 2, 4, 6, 8, we have a total of 12 bedrooms. That'd be like 1,320 gallons a day. But when you're on town sewer, I believe they use a lower number of somewhere around 75 to 85 gallons per day, per bedroom. So, I mean, if you need the number for the total flow, we can, you know, we could estimate that.
Could you do that?
Yeah, I think that, I think the former number that Paul gave are Title V design requirements.
For septic.
For septic systems, which are different and differentiated from sewer. And so we'll get that figured for you, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Rebecca, do you have any comments?
What's going on with the road that goes to Jacob's place? Is that just going to be, obviously you're not going to go through that anymore, right?
They're going to take it up.
So is that what your, that's not great?
Yes, yes, gone.
So that'll be grass?
Yes.
So does that mean you'll revise the drawings to show that?
Yeah, we will, Steve.
Yes.
Rebecca?
That's it.
That's it? All right, Ben?
So I have a decent amount of comments, but I think maybe with the opening of the public hearing, I don't have to get into all of them tonight, but I do have one area of clarification that I just need to, it needs to be spelled out to me because otherwise I might have, I just need to know that that's what's going on here. So in reading the zoning board of appeals decision, they reference the reduction in impervious surface, which is what helped them come to their finding. And they specifically mentioned the reduction is from 44 to 42.5 percent of impervious primarily by the use of pervious materials such as permeable pavement. So permeable pavement is being accounted for in terms, it's not, it's not being counted as impermeable, it's being counted as permeable. Now we've since abandoned the use of permeable pavement, am I correct?
You know, if I could stop you on that, just to clarify, because I was there. When we were before the ZBA in 2018, we were proposing permeable pavement and the ZBA was fine with that. And after that decision was filed in 2018, it came to our attention that Mass DEP considers permeable pavement as if it's impermeable for many reasons, one of which is because it's difficult to actually, I think you guys have dealt with this before, but difficult to maintain. It gets clogged up. And so, so when we redesigned this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, when we were before ZBA in 2019, we were not proposing permeable pavement because we knew about that particular issue. And I think that, Paul concurred on that. And I think that what you're, what you're referencing in the zoning decision is literally, it was probably, when you look at the two decisions, they're similar in the way they're structured and they use a lot of the similar language. I have a feeling that it could have been language that was brought over from one decision to the other, but was not what was put in front of them.
Okay, so, and that may be the case, but for me-
Yeah.
I need to either see the actual impervious area calculations in both the zoning board decision and this one and how the reduction of impermeable or permeable pavement might have altered that. Or I need to, we need to talk to the zoning board and make sure that what you've said is in fact, that that was some relic language that was inadvertently left in and that maybe they, you know, should have taken it out or changed the wording or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to, I want to make sure that if we're changing stormwater design and credits for permeability, you know what I mean? I want to make sure that we're actually-
It's true.
Going to make this non-conformity better or follow the finding that they've stated here, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Paul, are we able to provide those calculations for Ben?
Yes, we have a note on the plan, note nine, says the total proposed impervious area is 43.8 percent. Says to see the ZBA decision. I think ZBA allowed 44.3 percent.
That's not true.
They say 42.5.
That's correct.
42.5.
Three, two and a half.
Right, so that's an error on the-
They assumed it was going to be primarily achieved by the use of permeable pavement.
Yeah, and that's the language that Jeff said we should clarify with them.
Yeah.
I think we, I think Ben is, I think Ben is correct. We should get a new number for impervious surface, especially now that the concrete pavement is being removed. How much of this, how much of a reduction now is there in impervious surface from 44 percent?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're meeting a letter of the ZBA's decision.
Yeah, okay. I can say for the board this evening, the percentage of impervious area is under what the zoning board allowed, but I will get that number for you.
The impervial area-
Do it in a way that we can see what areas you're counting as impervious so we know.
So Paul, that would be not a letter form, but I think probably a letter with reference to a plan where you're coloring it up or something.
Yeah, we can do a plan with shading or coloring, show the difference between existing and proposed.
We'll do that.
That's how I read it.
Is this the same one?
Yeah. All right, I have, this is 62519. It says on page five, the proposed condition plan represents a change in permeable material which is not more detrimental than the existing conditions and further to find that the impervial area of the property shall not be more than 40 percent post-development. Supposed to be not more than 40 percent.
Yeah, and that's the same language that was in the 2018. So we're going to need to get a clarification. I'm going to look at that tape and-
Yeah, no, I think, and that, seeing that-
Yeah, this is a problem.
-helps show that it's more an issue of language in their-
Yeah.
In their decision.
Yeah.
But obviously we should still have the updated calculation for all. for our purposes, or something.
Yeah, and just, just to, um, since we're talking about it, is what, just to review this issue a bit, the Water Resource Protection District requires no more than 20 percent impermeable area, or, yeah, impermeable area, so long as you have infiltration, right? The, the calculation of im, of impermeable area, when we went to the zoning board in 2018, and what, what it is today, is approximately 44 percent, is my recollection. Paul?
Yes.
What happened was, in that proposal, we were proposing to reduce the amount of impermeable area to a, a percentage that was much less than 40 percent, and the zoning board said, "Well, we're happy to give you that, but we see that, you know, a, um, they basic, they, they said to us that, that they see that the more in, the more permeable area, the better, the greater reduction in impermeable surface, the better." So they said, "Why don't we just tell you and give you some more latitude in case you change your plan a bit, so you're not so boxed in," and they threw a number out, like, they were like, "Oh, well, let's just say 40 percent," and that's where the 40, 40 percent number came from. Uh, I'm, and so that, that number was, 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 was brought through from one decision to the other, the plan that was in front of them in 2019 is the plan that's in front of you now.
All right, all right, we have to clarify that.
Yeah.
That needs to be dealt with.
The letter also says at the end that the reduction of maximum pervious surface from 44 percent to 44 and a half percent.
Doesn't make any sense.
There's something wrong there.
Something's definitely wrong.
Yeah.
All right, Ben, you wanna continue?
Um, my second, I won't get into the detailed stuff tonight, but my second main concern, um, I'll defer to our peer reviewer Janet, 'cause she kinda hit the nail on the head. I had some questions about the stormwater design, but she obviously understands this at a much higher level, so I defer her, because she brought up some of what I was gonna talk about in terms of the biofiltration and water quality treatment and things of that nature, um, and kind of containing, um, potential spills. Lastly, my, um, uh, one of my concerns, obviously, with this development is, uh, I know when this is before the ZBA, there's a lot of public comment, um, because this is kind of like, little bit of like the business district and the newer Green Bush area kind of starting to creep a little bit into the more residential space, so, um, one of my concerns is making sure that as one of the, um, farthest projects out into that residential area is that we kind of get it right in terms of having it fit the neighborhood and everyone be happy, so, um, I just wanna make sure that, you know, the concerns of the abutters are addressed, it sounds like you guys have been kind of working iteratively on that. Um, I guess my biggest concern right now is just massing of the building, um, but it sounds like we're gonna be going to design review, hopefully to talk a little bit about that, um, and just make sure that we are able to, through the site design and architectural, is able to mitigate, um, any impact to the quality of life of the residents. Only que, and then one more clarification on the architectural plan, is I just, a third floor in the, in the elevation, a third floor in the residential unit is shown, but a floor plan for the floor, third floor is not shown, so I'd just like some clarification on what is actually in that third floor, and, um, I think we need to ensure that, uh, given our water and sewer capacity issues in this town, that, um, no more bedrooms will ever be added, um, into that potential space, uh, or any other spaces in these units, uh, as well, and that the actual bedroom count is, is totally representative of what's being presented here.
Okay, all right, are you all set?
That's it.
Patty? Ben?
The only issue I have is about the nonconforming uses that comes through the zoning bylaw within the 150-foot edge of the tributaries, and it says the nonconforming uses pre-exist the 2014 adoption of the President's requirements, so everything is grand upon there. So that's a problem philosophically for me, we adopt these requirements because it's better, it's a learning curve for us as we go along, so we know. You know, I know that peer review thinks that, you know, going under that 150-foot buffer is okay, but, um, it's nonconforming use in the Section 6s that they give out a, a pretty, I, for me, they are pretty liberal, and I wonder if we need to hold them in check a little more.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I'm gonna reserve my comments for later. I'll open this up now to the, to the public.
Before you go there-
Yes.
I have one more comment that I skipped over, I just wanted to ask, um, in the, in the barn or whatever it is, where the shops are, the second floor elevation, shows two residential apartments, and then it shows the space in between that said unfinished, two unfinished rooms, and my question is, what are those? What goes there?
Office space, it says.
Um, the one I'm looking at, the unfinished, let's say office.
And the architect is on the line, I mean, we can unmute her and, if you want her to speak.
Yeah, I was, I was trying, I just want, I just asked a question, what, what is that that's not? It doesn't look like it's part of either residence, but it looks like it's potentially a residence.
No, 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 I, I think when you look at the floor plan, it's, it's a, it's part of, it's part of the commercial unit, but it's not proposed to be anything except basically storage for stuff, like, in other words, we couldn't, I actually had the conversation about that, about that room, um, and we couldn't, you know, we didn't wanna designate it as office space, because we're not proposing it to be office space, so the question was, is do, do we label it, what do we do? The intention is for that to be storage space that is part of the unit underneath it, which is not a residential unit, it's, it's, uh, it's not a bedroom. And if we failed to label that, we should have, and I'll put that on there.
All right, Steve, you all set for now?
And can I ask one question?
Sure. Janet?
I just want some clarification, uh, the applicant indicated that the, like, just a little bit of the site is in the zone A, but when you look at, like, the Oliver Mount JLS, the entire site is within the zone A, so I don't know if, I don't know where that clarification comes from, but, um-
Janet.
I understand that the entire site falls within a zone A.
All right.
We'll, we'll, um, we'll address that, the zone A in, in the town, uh, the, the zoning bylaw references a map from like 1972, which is the map that defines the Water Resources Protection District in the Zone A and the Zone 2, right? Is that-
No, it references the March 2014 map, which is right on-
Okay, I think I'm conflating, yeah, yeah, I must be-
The whole site is in the zone A.
Yeah, I must be getting confused between the floodplain district-
Floodplain, floodplain is set up too.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll keep my mouth shut on those issues. We'll, we'll look at-
It is zone A.
Yeah.
Zone A?
Yeah.
Okay.
We got that from the zoning map.
I'm gonna open this up to the public.
So I'm gonna do the Q and A on the line, on the phone line.
All right, and I have some people in the-
So, so let's go through the phone line first.
All right, we're gonna do the phone line first. Okay, please identify yourself, name and address.
Q and A session has started.
Okay, who's that for?
We can't start, oh, okay, hold on, I mean.
Do we have anybody?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, 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 this is Becky Malaman, uh, live at 100 Pratt Road, uh, I'm also the Chair of the Water Resources Commission. Um, I was gonna ask a similar question about getting an updated percentage for impervious cover. My follow-up is, I believe, the gentleman mentioned that the zoning board, when the, before the zoning board in 2019, that you had removed the permeable pavement at that time, but in the, um, and April 2020, some results of drainage system calculation, it references the permeable pavement parking lot, um, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear about kind of when the permeable pavement was included, um, when it was removed, what the new impervious cover will be, um, make sure that's brought back to the zoning board, and also understand if the bio-retention areas have been adjusted at all to compensate for any additional infiltration needed as a result of losing the permeable pavement.
Okay, all right, thank you. We're on top of that, Becky. All right? Thank you.
Good morning.
Um, if anyone else has a question, hit star 61.
All right, if anybody else has a question, hit star 61.
Right now, we have nobody else.
Okay, all right, we'll open it up to, uh, the hallway.
Steve Montchiral, 9 Jenkins Place.
You can step in a little bit further, so we can hear you, sir.
Can't really hear you.
All right, try, take your mask off, so we can hear you.
I just want a little clarification, Steve Montchiral, 9 Jenkins Place, uh, so it's gonna be a total of 12 bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I understand that, uh, on the floor, if you have actually, I think underneath, four, four vehicles, and, um, maybe I missed it, but where, where the, uh, the rest of the pockets space is big?
They're in tandem, Steve.
In tandem?
Yes.
Meaning?
One goes in the garage and one goes behind it.
Behind it?
Yes.
All right. All right. Can I answer my question on that? And, um, I think, uh, with your garage in the back as a, as a plug up against my car, uh, what's the distance between the cars?
I think in the plane, it shows 20 feet.
20 feet.
Okay. And the other, the other reason that garage door is not shown on the back is to break up the back of the barn to a little more-
Like the barn, too. Well, this is all gonna be resolved at design review, okay?
I may, I may add two, that, um, the changes that they've done in the past two years, um, talked to most of the neighbors, and, uh, kinda, kinda had, uh, stay at the neighbors down there, you know, a little, a quick meeting tonight.
You have to speak up, Steve.
Oh, oh, sorry, um, we kinda like what the plans are looking, what they're looking, and appreciate the board, uh, you know, helping us out here and making sure everything's controlled, but, uh, what Mr. Pritchett has proposed, uh, in the last two years, when he come in meetings for the last two years, uh, we kinda like what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the corridor? Um, wait, is it-
Hi, my name is Renee Montchiral, 9 Jenkins Place.
Speak up, hon, speak up.
The question that I have is where the garages are, is there going to be any privacy? Are you going to do anything, because that will, we will lose all of our privacy in our yard, especially if the, how many floors are the apartments going to be above? Okay, how, is this one floor?
It's the commercial space here and one floor above.
And you're going to do anything to give us privacy?
There will be a landscape plan that we will go through to ensure that, um-
There's gonna be vegetative screening.
Vegetative screening.
Yeah.
So, you should be okay.
I just want to maintain privacy.
Of course, absolutely. All right, one person out in the hall.
Yes, Tom Keen at 16 Jenkins Place. My understanding when we first started coming to the meeting was people were, I think, misunderstanding that because those are two residential houses now, that they were going to change the use, but the use is actually what the property is. I heard something in here about nonconforming use, and I'm wondering what diff, what's different from, I understood that garages and things like that were, were allowed, because that's what our land was, and you didn't have to build residential houses there, but what do we open ourselves up to by agreeing, like, I like these plans much more than the other plans. I felt the other plans were counting their roofs as permeable, and the existing roofs that shed to the ground as non-permeable, and there was some bad math going on, but anyway, this is much better, but I'm just wondering, are we opening ourselves up to, if he's allowed a nonconforming thing that we turn around later on, somebody else has these buildings already in place and turns them into something else?
Yeah, so I could, I could take that. The purpose, the, the discussion about nonconforming uses has to do with, uh, has to do with the, with two items in the Water Resources Protection District, one being the 150-foot buffer strip. Right now, there is a, there are uses occurring within that buffer strip that are actually closer to the pipe than the proposed uses, um, and so that is a nonconforming use, and we needed to get the zoning board to agree to allow us to have these buildings within that setback, these activities that we're proposing. And then secondly, there is a issue of nonconforming use with respect to the amount of impermeable area, um, on the site, and right now, there's 44 percent, and we're seeking to reduce that, and we're gonna get some updated calculations. But most notably, what we're not proposing to do is to put anything on the property from the standpoint of a use that is not allowed in the zoning district. When I say use, I mean, um, there's a, there's a chart in the zoning bylaw that says how generally we can use it and how we can't, so, um, you know, we're, there are, what we're proposing, which is a mixed use of dwellings, residential apartments, and shops of the type that we're proposing are actually allowed, so it's not a nonconformity. Also, the, I might add, the use of the property as a two, two dwellings on one lot that contains less than 30,000 square feet is presently a use that's not allowed in the zoning bylaw as well, if that, if that clarifies it at all.
Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, that does clarify that, but still, are those buildings roofs considered non-permeable at this point?
The roofs are non, the roofs are non-permeable, all roofs, the roof that, that are there now, and the roofs that are going there are all considered impermeable.
Oh, okay, so all roofs are-
Yes.
In both.
Right.
Yep.
All right, great, that answered that, and just to clarify, the 10-foot stretch that does open onto Jenkins' place will just not exist, it will be sealed off, or-
It's gonna be, no, it's gonna be grass, it's gonna be lawn.
Okay.
Okay, so-
Not a, not a throughway?
Not a throughway, no.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, anybody else?
Anyone on the line?
Anyone on the line? Nope. They can hit star 61, all right, Ben?
I just had one last thing I just wanted to say for the record, I forgot to mention it, it was one of the ones, it was like a little bit of a sticking point for me, and again, I guess I'd address this also to Janet, and she's on the line, was about the setback for infiltration BMPs, the biofiltration sw, uh, bio-retention system is only, I think, two and a half feet from the abutting property line, and I just wanted to make sure that that is, um, a standard, or that, that's an allowable distance from an abutting property and that, um, like, I think maybe a mow analysis was done, but just make sure that, uh, that's okay, 'cause it seems awfully close.
Did you get all of that? Janet?
Hold on, I gotta switch out of the press and the grenade launcher.
Janet?
Q and A session is over.
Okay.
Can you see me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay.
Um, so typically for a sub-subject infiltration system or a large infiltration system, you wanna have at least 10 feet separation, the bio-retention area is, is, doesn't-
The bio-retention area is, doesn't infiltrate significantly as an infiltration system, so it can be a little bit closer to the property line, but I'm still looking at that as something that should be probably aligned, so that it doesn't infiltrate at all anyway. That's kind of a deep question, but a larger system should definitely be further away from the property line, so the bio is probably okay.
All right. All right, it is now getting close to my bewitching hour of nine o'clock, so we are going to continue this public hearing. Let's see, you got it?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the mixed use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District for the property located at fourteen sixteen Old Country Way until?
Until?
We were thinking of September tenth.
September tenth, twenty twenty, at seven PM, and continue the time for action until October thirtieth, twenty twenty.
All right, is there a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Barban?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard said aye. Ms. Borenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
All in favor is Janet.
Just as a clarification, we can only do one of these a night. And it's, it's very difficult, it really is hard. And so, please be patient, and we will be patient with you. It works both ways.
We have no criticisms, and we have a lot of work to do to answer a lot of these questions, so.
Yes, you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you all for your time.
All right, now we have, is my agenda, did you take my agenda?
I'm not even yet.
Good night. Thank you, Janet. All right, minutes?
We don't have any minutes.
We have no minutes. Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of one thousand two hundred, twelve hundred dollars to Merrill Corporation for the peer review of the basement test pit at Curtis Estates, a hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents to Karen Joseph on mileage for site visits, for two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars to Harriman Associates for consulting services on the master plan, for four thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars to Horstley Witten Group for peer review of fourteen sixteen Old Country Way, for two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents to Chesia Consulting for peer review of eighteen Ford Place, for a hundred and twenty-five dollars to Chesia Consulting for peer review of zero Country Way, zero rear Country Way residential compound, and for one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents to Horstley Witten Group for peer review services for seaside and situates.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes.
Ms. Borenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Yeah.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have liaison assignments, did everybody get the memo?
Yes.
Okay.
We have one, one committee that we did talk to Scott with the last meeting, which is the Charter Review Committee. I think Rebecca was.
Yes.
But I don't remember.
Yes, it was, we had talked about that.
We thought.
They never did anything about it.
We need to assign someone to that committee, so.
And I had even mentioned that to Lorraine Devon.
Right, and Lorraine reminded me of it the other night, so I don't know that they're having any meetings, we just need to have a contact liaison person, so if you want to remain that person, that's fine. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Who knows?
The CD sent you, it's moving right along.
Yes, it is.
Popping right up dip.
Got monitoring agents on that, baby?
We do.
Make sure it's going right.
Yes, we do. Yep, we do. Okay. Now, we have liaison reports, I don't have anything. CPC meets on Monday night, I think you all know that at town meeting, we purchased the Lincoln, Mordecai Lincoln property, which is wonderful. We've also purchased, I saw in today's Mariner, finally, we got rid of.
I left this in there.
The Maxwell Trust, that's been paid off, they got their money, so that's done.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Been out of the loop a little bit.
We're all out of the loop. It's all this virtual stuff. All right, planning and development?
We remain very busy, next time, we have a new project before us as well, we'll have probably a couple A and Rs, we'll probably have, we'll have Curtis Estate lot releases, and we'll probably have a surety reduction, so next week will be a busy time. We will be having another new project later in August, and you've got Man Hill continuance in early August, so that's, things are kind of just, we're very busy still, we're very busy, we're still doing stormwater permits, and going on a lot of site visits.
Right. Also, too, design review will be looking at this project and?
Eighteen Ford Place. We have a, based on the fact that you were going to review it to Design Review Committee, we set up a Design Review Committee meeting for the twenty-seventh of July, and it'll take the two new projects, and then they'll, in one, in one night, so there'll be like an hour for fourteen sixteen Country, Old Country Way, and an hour for eighteen Ford.
And it will be at the?
What was the second one, Karen?
Eighteen Ford Place, you'll be getting, we'll be sending that stuff out to you, it's a multi-family.
Okay, we haven't seen it yet.
You haven't seen it, that's on your meeting next time.
And it's at the EOC building for the design review.
Right, and then, you'll have another new project later in August, that'll have to go to design review at another meeting after that.
So, we're incredibly busy.
They're all special, they're all special permits, so you're, you're very busy.
Okay, and we've also, are advertising for an alternate member, so if anybody has any thoughts?
Plus, we are, we have to decide ultimately when we're going to resume the master plan. We potentially have North Situate zoning for the fall town meeting, too, which, when I asked earlier this week, they don't really know when that's going to be yet. But there's a lot of things, a lot of cards going on at the same time.
A lot of balls in the air, and some of them.
Karen, any, any update from Kevin on the, on the water reports?
No, I, I will ask him again tomorrow, I.
Okay, he never responded to my email.
He doesn't respond to emails.
He told me he was having somebody look at it last week, to make sure every item from the RFP was included, and then he was going to release the draft. So, I will ask him about that. I'm still waiting for the SWIP and the Niptis permit for well seventeen A.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I will ask tomorrow, Steve.
One other question, it came up at town meeting, they asked for approval to put in a permanent residual basin or something for well eighteen A or B, I forget which. Do you know what that is about?
Wait a minute, I just so happened to have the warrant. What are we looking for here, Steve?
I wondered whether they had to come in and sort of give us a site plan on that or something.
I'm just trying to think, was this in the capital plan?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Believe it was.
Sewer, 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 it was underwater? Okay, permanent residuals disposal well eighteen B treatment, the water.
You mean which one?
Eighteen, eighteen B, for three, for three hundred.
Anybody know which one that is?
Nope. No clue, but.
How was it stated again?
Permanent residuals disposal well eighteen B treatment.
So, it's probably, is it just a disposal contract?
Three hundred and fifty thousand, having a clue.
I think they want to build up like a disposal basin, right, that they're backwashing into instead of dumping it down to the sewer.
Hmm.
That's what it sounded like, but I didn't have any real information on it, and I'm wondering whether, whether that's something they could do without sort of state plan review.
I can inquire.
I'm worried that they're creating a permanent waste pond somewhere.
All right, we'll get.
Pretty permanent.
Yeah, we're getting on it, Steve, just so happened to have the warrant.
Maybe Karen, when you talk to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask him.
Give us an answer on that, too.
I will, I will ask about that tomorrow.
Okay, excellent, anything else, anybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Third second?
Ms. Barban?
Yes.
Ms. Borenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, good night.